So I'd like to start, I'll lead us off with the pledge and then we'll get going because we've got a great presentation. And I do have a bunch of red badges to get out to people, so I want to make sure we have enough time. So if you join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the citizens of this nation. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And I know everybody's had a chance to kind of already visit. And I do want, if I could have Carla let me know, I think we have at least one guest. Go ahead.
I have this throw out.
Sorry, could you say it again?
Noel.
Noel, welcome. And who else at the table?
Joanne.
Yeah.
There's a guest.
With the also speaker. Minsky from United Way.
Congratulations. Well, thank you. Welcome to both of you.
Thank you.
And then we've got Miley at the table here. Everybody knows my niece, Miley Stollin, I think. Don't believe anybody at this table. We got one of our red badge. And Lynn's our red badge at the back table as well. And then Raina, if you could introduce your kids.
Welcome back to our students. So we have two September Students of the Month. With Camille, Kylie Humphries, and then our inbound exchange student, Marine.
I think we've determined that Marine's badge is somewhere in Italy or access to it. We'll get that. And we've got Jim at our table over there, another one of our red badge. And our present presenter, Kevin Mansky, who's a visiting Rotarian from the Greater Albany Club. So welcome, guys. So I just want to say good afternoon and just real quickly before we get right to our presentation. That welcome, September 4th, so this is our new month and special welcome to our students. It's really great to have you back. Everybody's excited for have a school back in session and then have our Students of the Month and all that coming up again. Special thanks to our reader Carla. Really thank you for signing up and Marsha Buckley showed up early and helped set up with Tanya.
She was a much help, Marsha.
Typical judge. She just snapped back and told everybody what they were doing wrong. But it did work out. And thanks to again, Tanya for organizing the meals. It's not just today. It's a lot of work getting the orders, getting things, making sure we don't have the same food every week. But it's been, it's been awesome. The food has been great. So I want to thank most as well. Like I said, I wish they'd have some of these things on their menu as well. Their catering is awesome.
I think she's gonna add some.
And again, thanks to John for the IT support and getting everything set up with our speaker presentations and all. We couldn't do it without the team of people making these meetings happen. It's great to see everybody and enjoying our great weather. And and a special welcome to our speaker, presenter, Kevin Mansky with United Way, visiting Rotarian. And under our new meeting format, in order to make sure the people who need to leave in time don't have to get up during our presentation. I'm going to open up with a brief introduction for Kevin and we're going to get right to the presentation and do announcements and all that. So Kevin is the president and CEO of United Way for Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. And a fellow Rotarian from Greater Albany Club, president, and currently serves with arms for their club. He's heavily involved in the Lynn County community for 30 years. He participates in many boards and committees around the Albany area and is excited to join the United Way team. When he isn't working, he enjoys spending time with his wife and four kids. And often be found exploring the outdoors, fishing, traveling to new places, cooking and playing drums. So maybe a small presentation microphone before you start. But if you could all join me in welcoming Kevin.
Thank you very much. Okay, so John told me whenever I needed to change his slides, to wave my middle finger at them, but I think I'm not going to do that. But can we change this slide? Okay. So yeah, like Brian said, I'm Kevin Mansky. I'm the present CEO of the United Way of Lynn, Benton, Lincoln Counties. And I think most of us know what the United Way does, or at least knows about it, but you know what we do? Because then we know what we really do, because not a lot of people get it. So nobody in the crowd knows what United Way is. Yeah, okay, you can write the mission. It's right there. But great, I can lie and you guys won't believe everything I say. So the United Way was started back, actually, you can click it. We'll bypass this one. I like to talk and not say exactly what's up there. So we're the oldest nonprofit in the country. We started back in 1887. Back then, it was called the Community Chest. And they kind of, it was the same premise as what it was up until about 20 years ago. It was corporations and workers contributing to one fund. And then this community chest would go out to the community and figure out where the money was best used and put it out there. So that's kind of the model that happened for almost, almost 100 years really. And since then, so a lot of people think, well, yeah, you steal from the person, give to the poor. I've heard that before. And it's not quite like that, okay? But the Workplace Campaign has been kind of the United Way trademark, if you will, for about 100 years. It's still going strong. We still have a great campaign going between the three counties. But we do a lot more than just that. We manage funds for different organizations. We're sponsors. We are fiscal sponsors. We also manage like the Corvallis, City of Corvallis's Social Service Fund, which is about $500,000. We manage that. We do one similar for Lynn County. We also do a lot of disaster prep stuff. And we're kind of the convener for the three counties. We're also the conduit for FEMA money, for E F S P money, which is emergency food and shelter program money. So and we also have specialized in building strategic plans for different nonprofits. Because what's going on right now is a lot of nonprofits want to do something really cool, but they don't understand the business side of running the nonprofit. And they can get themselves into trouble. So we come in as, or as a foundation. And we can create a strategic plan for them. We can create trainings on how to engage your board and how to build your organization. And you know, this whole premise about spend less than you make, that helps too, you know, to keep you in business. So there's a lot of fiscal responsibility that we can also teach. So we're kind of a convener and a foundational support for a lot of nonprofits. And also we fund programs too. So go ahead. Okay, so the three pillars that we try to kind of focus on are health, education, and financial stability. So and they're pretty broad and they're, they're, they're supposed to be broad because every United Way is pretty autonomous. We are a part of the bigger network. We pay dues, but as far as running the company or running the organization. We have pretty, we have really a lot of autonomy. So we can figure out through our community partners which programs to fund and which little cows need the money the worst. And how we can take the funds we have and really make a difference in the community. So these are the three pillars that we try to fund around, health, financial stability, and education. So another big focus we have is nationwide, we're focused on the ALIS population. And I think some of us know or have heard the term ALIS, but does everybody know what that means? Yeah, it's up here if you guys can read it. I mean, I'll get, you know, if there's one there and one there, you can't skip out my ball there. So yeah, it's what we used to call the working war. We don't call that class war, but it's, it's people who are above the federal poverty level. Who make just enough where they can't get this thing in front of the government, but they're not making enough money to survive. And this is, this, this group of people is, is expanding every year. And so ALIS is asset limited, income constrained, yet employed. And we have a robust program that's, that's paid for by the United Way worldwide. And we can drill down from region of the county, or sorry, region of the country to state, to county, to city, to neighborhood. We can bring up all the demographics and we can see who's living where and what their incomes are. And are they married? Do they have two kids? Are they seniors? And then we can take that data, give it to our community impact teams. And they, they let the data drive the decisions on which nonprofits get the money. And it's totally transparent. And we're using really good updated data to do that. And we're seeing a big difference in what we can do with limited funds in a specific community. And it's different for every county. Okay, so in our region, 46% of households in Lincoln County live in ALIS. That's almost half. Now, this is a combination of people below the federal poverty level and then people in that, in that strata, right? 78% of single mother households in Lincoln County are in the ALIS group. 49% of seniors, and this one surprised me quite a bit. 49% of seniors in Lincoln County are characterized in the ALIS threshold. Now, that's full-time residents. That's not part-time people. That's not, you know, people who show up for the summer and leave. This is supposedly full-time people. And then across the country, BIPOC households are 22% more likely to be in that ALIS group. Now, if you compare that to Lynn County and Benton County, it's kind of the same. 46% over Lincoln County, 43% in Lynn, but 47% in Benton County. And that surprises some people. But why do you think that, that number's a little higher? Say what?
College kids.
College kids and, and the cost of housing in Corvallis. And I understand the housing out here because of my other job, real estate. And I get what's going on on the coast for, for lack of housing. And it's, it's a huge economic driver and it's a huge hurdle. Corvallis kind of has some of the same issues. And let's face it, Corvallis is the majority in Benton County. Benton County's got about 100,000 people and Corvallis is about 60,000 of that. And then you go on Paloma, so that metro area kind of makes up most of it. Cost of living there is really high. They have some, they have some high taxation and that's why you see that a little higher. Plus you, you throw the college on top of that and you're going to have some, some critical stuff. So let's focus on Lincoln County. Okay, there's a lot of data on here. There'll be a test. So please memorize all this. What I kind of want to talk about is the federal poverty level for a single person is about $14,000, $14,580. For a family of four, it's $30,000. Now, who can live on $30,000 for a family of four in this room? There's no way. There's a way. So that's the federal poverty level and that's joint income, right? That's two income households. It's not a lot. Two incomes, okay? The survival, the survival budget, and again, we can kind of nitpick this a little bit. It's, it's a good abstract. There will be some, some, some differences in area to area. But for Lincoln County, the survival budget with two adults with two kids in childcare is about $85,000 a year. That's survival. Now, 15, 20 years ago, I remember my first, more than that, 25 years ago. I remember my first paycheck at the, at second year, my first year as a cop, right? I looked down, I said $55,000 and I thought I was fat. I thought I was living off high on the hog. Well, you, you compare that now, $55,000 really doesn't get you that far nowadays. So people kind of look at that and go, oh no, I can live off $85,000. How many of you have tried to find childcare for infants? My, my wrong call. It's right down out. But yeah, infant childcare, how much? $1,500 a month for a kid, give or take?
At least.
So there's, there's a huge cost. And how, you know, I went to Costco and again, my kids are gone right now. We have four of them. I still spent 220 bucks the other day on Costco stuff. And it was just food. It wasn't even the real stuff I wanted. So look at the numbers here. Two adults, $26,000. Two adults with two kids, about $72,000. So that's a survival budget, okay? So you come down here. The median household income for Lincoln County is about $61,000. Somebody said no, or somebody said out. That's the median income. So half, half the county is above that, half is below it. The state average is, is $8,000. Okay, again, we're talking to how typically two income households. 49% of seniors like to talk about, ALIS households are 31% and the state average is 30. So Lincoln County is about right on average with how the states, the states going. Household poverty in Lincoln County, so people below the federal poverty level, you're about 15%. And I thought this graphic is really interesting. If you're under 25 years old in Lincoln County, 77% of the population do qualify as ALIS. Okay, I get that. Got your kids starting out, kind of makes sense. 25 to 44 are 38%, but 45 to 54 are 41%. This typically speaking, this age group, or 45 to 64, sorry. That's when you typically build your wealth. More and more people buy more houses, add more to their 401K, grow their wealth in their mid 40s to retirement than you did before. And it's 41%. So that's, that's something that's, that's a little abnormal. And then 65 and over, you're at 50%. Any questions on this? Because I went over this way too fast. I know this, but we'll kind of press for time. But does anyone have any questions or thoughts?
Like, so that's that income? It's like a minimum wage first, or it's 2,000 hours a year is $30,000.
Yes, a full-time jobs, yes. Any other questions? Must be explained this really well since nobody has any questions. Okay. Okay, so one of the ways we're going to discuss this, and this is a broad conversation. This month, September 24th, over in Lebanon, over at the Boulder Falls Event Center. We're going to have an ALIS summit, okay? We are bringing people from United Way Worldwide or the Pacific Northwest that kind of the second tier down. Jim Cooper's going to come in, going to give you a kind of a region view of what's going on with, within the three states. We're going to have Belieft Burke and her team. She's a policy director for ODHS. She's also on our board. She's going to come and present what is happening at the state level and where some of the pockets are and what we can do to hopefully address it. And then we're going to have business nonprofit leaders and the community leaders there to start the conversation. Because we can't rely on the state. We can't rely on the federal government to help us solve this. This has got to come from the community. So this is a high-level conversation that, that we're going to start. And this is not going to be the only one. We're going to kind of take it on the road and discuss this further. But we got to get the conversation started. So if you have time, this might be a great opportunity to come over and see what's happening within the, within the three, three county region. That's September 24th. Okay, so our approach to helping wipe out poverty and to helping with those other pillars that we talked about. Okay, we raise funds and we talked about the campaign already. It's, it's pretty typical. We have workers donate every month off their paycheck. And then typically those organizations that they work for, they match that and then give it, and then donate it over a 12-month period. It's called a campaign, right? We, we also do the fiscal sponsorships for a lot of nonprofits. We manage funds. We have our own endowment. We also get a lot of gifts that come in and a lot of those gifts are dedicated. A lot of it goes to Dolly Parton Imagination Library. They also do child abuse type, type things. And then food insecurity. Food insecurity seems to be the hot button right now because there's so much of it out there. But what kind of sets us apart from some other funders is we vet agencies. So our process is we have a team of volunteers for every county. It's called the Community Impact Team. And every county has seven to 10 people who've been doing this for a while. So they know the organizations. They review every application that comes in. They vet the agencies. You got to be in business for about two years. You have to be a 501(c)(3). You have to have a board of directors. So after we go through and look at the, the request, look at the agency, do kind of a mini background on them. If we fund them, then they also have to report at least twice a year on what they use the funds for. And then if they reapply the next year, which typically they do. We have some historical data to go off of and see what, what they've been doing. And the people on these CI teams, they put in a lot of work. And I love to death because they know the community better than I do. And they look at these things with a fine tooth comb because they want to make sure that where we put the money is good. It's going to get the best return off on investment. And it's totally transparent, which I love. So once they go through the vetting process and the application process, then, then we fund them. Typically, we, we write checks every quarter and it's like clockwork. You know, the end of the quarter, these agencies get, get the funds. So that's, that's a campaign model. Again, we also manage things for different governments. Like I said, Lynn County and also the City of Corvallis, they have their own social service funds that, that we, we manage those. It's the same type of process in Corvallis. It's again, it's about $500,000 for me, I think. And that's a line item budget with them. So all that money has to be spent within the confines of Corvallis. And there are some, some parameters in that, in that program, but we also vet those agencies too and kind of go through the same thing as this. Same thing with Lynn County too. So there's a campaign. There's basically two, two income streams from our campaign. There's designated funds and then there's impact areas. Most of the money that we get goes to impact areas. And you can choose whether you want it to go to health, education, financial stability, and you can also choose which campaign it goes to. And that's a big deal, okay? People in different counties, they want to make sure the money stays, stays locally. And I get that. So we silo everything, right? If it's designated, if you want your money to go to a certain nonprofit, but maybe you don't have the ability to write a big check once a year. You can go through payroll deduction, get the same amount, and we can, we can funnel it to them. And so that's another kind of plus with, with a campaign. You don't have to write a big check. You can break it up over, you know, your pay periods or monthly or whatever you want to do. So once we get a total here, we open it up for grants. And we normally get a lot more requests than we have, you know, money for. And that's when the CI team goes, you know, goes through and looks at all the different applications and all the different programs. And then they, they go through the process to fund. So we, we fund. Typically, it's in the form of a grant. And then we also do some work in the community and we'll get to this later on, but most of it goes out as just grants, okay? So last year, we did, we did about 1.1 billion in total support. We funded about 190 programs. Gave out about 67,000 books through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program. We'll talk about that later on. Sent it out to over 5,600 kids. Really cool program. And we had about, we impacted, we estimated about 100,000 people. Now, we were one of the first United Ways in Oregon to jump on board with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And we rolled over last June, we rolled over 500,000 books out to kids. And that's a free program. So any kid from ages zero to five, which I think is kind of playing a call of the kid zero, but anyway. From birth to five, if you sign up, they will get a free book every single month. It's a great program. And then we have the data to show that this program really works. They have a test and an assessment at the third grade level, and that's kind of the benchmark. And they can show that kids that are involved in the Deep Nyal Program or Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program do better at that assessment. And that's kind of the gateway to success for, for future grades. If they're at a, if they're at a certain reading level by third grade, that's a predictor that they're going to be successful in school. And most of the kids who are in this program hit those marks. So the other part that the campaign goes to are some of the programs. And a program that, that we have is called Day of Action, one of many. Day of Action is a time, it's an event where we go and we typically box about 50,000 meals. And then also depends on the county. In Lynn County, we do a big book drive too, same day. So we had our first one over here last, last April over at Rogue. And it was great. The community turnout was unbelievable. We had 100 people. We weren't sure how many people were going to show up because it was our first time doing it over here. And with the help of a lot of you guys out here and a lot of the community, we showed up to Rogue. Rogue, Jason Pond over at Rogue was absolutely fabulous. He gave us the facility, gave us the, the, the equipment, the forklift, the wrapper. He even gave us staff to do it. I asked him for a free beer. He said no, but everything else was, was great. These are the sponsors we had for that event. And the tribes came out, Samaritan, Lincoln County, Central Atlanta, Orange Coast Bank, BFW, The Chamber. This, this club gave some. And this couldn't have happened without, without this, this club and without these sponsors. And it was a great event. It was, it was one of those, one of those things where people are still talking about it. And we've already got some sponsorships lined up for next year because it had such a huge impact. So we took about 100 volunteers, made them wear the dumb little hats and the, you know, the nets and the aprons. And they had fun. We had music blaring. There were cowbells going off all over place, whatever one line, got a box of food. Everybody ran around and yelled and screamed. And then Northwest Natural brought in their food truck or their food trailer and they cooked hamburgers and hot dogs for everybody afterwards. So it was just a great event. And the cool thing about this, when you're volunteering, it's a one and done thing. A lot of times events, if you volunteer for it, you're there for a day or two days or three days and there, there's a lot to it. And let's face it, we're all pretty busy. And we hit that. This was a one and done thing. You show up about eight o'clock, you're done by about noon. And it worked out great. And it wasn't raining. We were a little worried because April on the beach, maybe it can rain, but it was a beautiful day. So go ahead. And people always ask, where does, where did the food go? It all stayed in Lynn County. So what we did was, we had four, four recipients this year for those 50,000 minutes. We would tell the crew what nonprofit they, they were packing for at the time. And so you knew at, at whatever time it was, you were either packing for Agape, the tribes, Panthopen Charity, or Lynn County HHS. And it was really cool because they would palletize these boxes and they would show up during the event. So you actually got to see where the food went and it stayed 100% in the county. And this is shelf-stable food that can, that can be on a shelf for two or three, four, five years. And nothing left the county. It was all local. It was, the sponsorships were local. The, the labor was local and then the recipients were all local. And that's a huge thing. And that's why these events really work well. So we have one coming up, April 11th. If you guys are busy, same place, almost same, same time. We are still looking for some sponsorships. We just got the date confirmed a couple of weeks ago. We've already got the traps on board. Oregon State Credit Union, Samaritan Northwest, The Chamber, Rogue. Love to have you guys a part of this event. Either as a, as a sponsor or as volunteer help. It's going to be fun and we're going to build on last year. It's going to be great. So we talked about TPIL. And we're not going to go through the whole thing. But in Lincoln County, started the program back in 2018. So far, we've given out about 58,000 books and this is a couple of months old, so we're, we're probably closer to 60,000. And about 2,000 kids up in Lynn, what started back in 15, 304,000. Benton is at almost, well, probably closer to 42,000 now. Again, we, we rolled over 500,000 books last June. So it's, that's a pretty big milestone. Now, funding for this used to be completely sponsorship or campaign. United Way funded the entire bill for all three counties, okay? And then there were some, some groups that contributed and we manage that. Now, did you guys hear about two years ago, the state kicked in some money? Anyone hear about the state of Oregon? Okay. So the state of Oregon kicked in half. And what, what they're doing now is they're paying for half the cost of the books, not half the cost of the program, but half the cost of the books. So we get invoiced by the Dollywood Foundation for how many books we, we push out over the three counties. The state is now paying half of that invoice. So we're, we're still fundraising. We're still fundraising for the programming piece. We're still fundraising for the labor to do it. We're still fundraising for half the books. the labor to do it. We're we're still fundraising for half the books, all the advertising, all that. But it's been a big help that the state is picking up half for the books, the cost of the books. My my budget for this, for the three counties, is about a hundred and fifty two thousand, give or take a year. And that's with the states matched. If the state wasn't matching it, we'd be probably closer to our thousand dollars for just this program alone. So we we appreciate the help of the state, um, but there's still a long ways to go. The cost of books, get this, the cost of books goes up every year. Weird, huh? It's kind of like we're in in inflationary time period. How much time do I have left? Do we need to shut up?
What do you think, Rick? Just a few minutes?
Give me the, okay. So, these are some of some of the initiatives that that we're doing right now. Obviously, Dolly Parton Imagination Library, Child Abuse Network, Day of Action, of course, the campaign. We're also a supporter of the two one one network. You guys know what that is? Okay, it's when you can call up and get and get resources or direct it to resources by your county. There was a glitch a couple of years ago. I guess people from rural Oregon were getting sent to to the Portland Call Center, and they were getting referred to places in Portland, and they were like in Burns, so it didn't really work out well. So, and then we also did, we also have have a program for filing taxes for uh for people and then the single payer. And what are we going, what's gonna happen in twenty twenty six? We're gonna further our Child Abuse Network program. Obviously, we're gonna have another Day of Action here. We do one annually in Lynn County, and we're gonna start one. Or we're gonna bring one back over in Benton County, and they're all gonna be a little bit different. We're also doing a lot with emergency management. We were on a twenty two million dollar grant that was gonna do three disaster resilience hubs in Monroe, Alpine, not Alpine, sorry, Alsea, which is gonna serve eastern Lincoln County and also full moment. And that's on hold because of the budget cuts and the and the freezes that happened at the federal level, but that's that's still out there. We're also really expanding our backbone services for strategic planning and foundational support for for different nonprofits, and that seems to be really taking off. A lot of boards, a lot of executive directors, a lot of leaders in the nonprofit arena really want to do something, but they don't know how to get there. And that's, they'll be them. And one of my staff members has a master's in strategic planning, and he is phenomenal at kind of getting to the root of an organization and helping them develop a roadmap, not only for the first year, but after five years. And that's really proven well. So the next slide is just who we fund. We fund a lot of people. And we're not gonna go through every every single one of them. There's a lot of people here and a lot of different nonprofits. And we'll go to the next one. So last year, we did about one point one hundred ninety local uh programs, sixty seven thousand books to about fifty six hundred children. I learned something about how how to preference this. I we were doing a chamber luncheon or a chamber meeting, and um, at the Dolly Parton level, they they talk about, you know, touches. Every book is a touch. So I got up and I said, yeah, we touched fifty six hundred kids a lot last year. And a couple of my friends were like, are you kidding me? You really said that? So now it's fifty six hundred kids have been have been um in our program. And that's a huge number, but there's a lot more to go. We can, we have to get word out, especially to the schools and hospitals. Hospitals have having great Samaritan, especially over in the valleys, very about um putting little flyers in the go-home kits for the newborns. And if we can get the kids in early, they they stay with the program until they're they're at least five. So, how can you guys get? Well, call me, I can take your money. But we have online stuff, we have payroll deduction. People still use mail once in a while, especially around Christmas time. We get a bunch of checks in the mail, kind of fun. But do you guys have any questions? I know we gotta end this quick, wait. Any questions?
How's your overhead?
Nineteen percent. Okay, and it's, that's kind of the standard. If you, if you look at business, if you're under thirty percent, you're you're served pretty good. Um, we're about nineteen percent. Yes.
The groups you funded, which of those are in new four? The main go-to find them quickly.
Click back real quick. Okay, they're all, they're all color-coded. So anything with the red, Bootshare, BB Camp, Casa, Coastal Range Food Bank, Wheels on Wheels, Yocona, Lynn County Long Term Recovery Group. I don't see agents up there, but I I believe we fund them a little bit too. So anything with the red is is what's in Lincoln County right now. And that's just who's applying. So, um, we're always asking people to, or nonprofits to apply. Yeah.
The Imagination Lover. How do kids, if kids with their child is to have an address? How do, how do they get the books?
They need an address to ship to. So they can either use like a grandparent's address or something, or a family friend's, but we need some address to ship to them.
There are, there are agencies in town that told a lot of people without an address, instead of a mailing address. Uh, I had one just talking to along yesterday about this. They used to get it, now they're homeless, but they had a meeting that afternoon with a chance and a Dolly resident center who go off for mail services.
Yeah, we just need an address. We're not gonna question where it goes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And as a Rotarian, you know, one of our main goals is to try to eradicate polio. So, and thanks for your presentation today. As as everybody could hear that and know, know what we do as Rotary, it's uh it's clear that there's a whole lot of overlap between United Way and and Rotary's goals. With United Way being more obviously uh locally focused, as we are with a lot of things, uh but also with the national, but so it's clear why you have those two parts of your life from the vision of the real estate uh world. And if you do want a free beer, come to our barbecue next week. We'll have free beer. Uh, and that's a reminder for everyone else to get signed up. Uh, but again, thanks, thanks a lot, Kevin. That was a great presentation. And um, as a Lincoln County employee, I know we have quite a few of our employees who sign up to give through payroll. And that's an easy way to just uh uh know that you're doing something uh for your local community. So our Rotary focus uh for September uh for August, it was uh membership. And um, I'm gonna say something about that and do some red badges in a second. But for September, as we talked about the Dolly Parton, as uh as well as pretty much all of our areas of focus, our focus for September is education and literacy. As Rotarians, our avenues of service, including vocational, community service projects, uh international service, um uh and advancing understanding of peace and environmental service. We can see that all of those, the cornerstone or the foundation for that is education and literacy. It affects all of our avenues of service, so. As Kevin was discussing with the Dolly Parton and uh 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 the dream initiative with uh, and we've heard about that before with Laura being with the library, of course. Um, and knowing how important that is to start at a young age, but it's important at every age for all of our avenues and to be successful. And it's one of the cornerstones again for promoting fairness and justice, which is also one of our founding principles as Rotarians. You can't really have fairness or justice. Everybody doesn't have access to education. Uh, it's been a way of minimizing fairness and justice in the past of making sure information is uh only for select few. Uh, so making sure that it's not is uh very important. So now I would like to invite up, I was gonna have them do one at a time, so we've got three red badges to award. So, again, thanks for all the efforts that everybody's been doing um to it, uh get a red badge people. But first, I'd like to have uh Lynn Schubert come on up. Welcome, our guys. You're off the stickers.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so excited.
Got your welcome packet.
And you spelled my name wrong.
I don't spell it.
No C.
Oh, no C. I'm sorry.
But I can cross it off.
So I won't, that won't, that won't fit the first one, Lois' test, but it's not the truth. Now, Trevor's here too. Your badge, red badge, just make sure you turn it on. Again, congratulations. We got your name. Jim's in here as well. Jim, you have to leave. They sneak out.
Yeah.
Oh, Jim snuck out. All right, I'm sure. Okay. Uh, but so again, thanks for all the efforts, Marissa especially, uh with uh moving, moving our members along the red badge. And I know we'll get it moved around the board. Now, some of you might have noticed, once, some of you might have noticed our uh new banner's up, so our green banner's down. We did uh that uh President Mario had to step down. And so our new president uh came out with a new banner. Uh, he didn't like the green from Brazil, so I liked it with the ducks, but it's okay. It looks pretty. But uh, he's also the cover of our magazine for September. And he had a president, a new president's message in there um about peace through education, kind of with along with our uh theme for the month. Uh, there's also an article that introduces him. It's it's really good. If you get a chance to read it, one of the best parts about it that I I really liked was uh, and they had this as a photograph as well, taken out of the article. Is that uh you, he, he, one of his statements was, you don't go to Rotary like you go to the cinema, where you sit and watch other people doing something. Uh, Rotary is something you do. And that's the people of action, that's uh that we, we don't just sit and watch, we step up, we do like United Way. Um, so uh, there's also a pretty cool article about a a person who won a Rotary Rotary Ambassadorial Scholarship. It was back in the eighties, who was uh back, back, yeah, and um, and she won that when she was at the Beaverton Club when she was a kid. Uh, and so it's a neat article too for uh one of our, I'll call it local Rotarians in the national magazine, international magazine. Uh, we do also have our September newsletter out. It's on the tables. It should have been emailed out through DACDB. If you didn't get it through DACDB, again, let me know. That means there's something wrong with the email. Uh, let me get it fixed. Uh, I also wanted to bring up for our people, football fans, um, there's something uh over by Marissa on the table. It kind of looks like this. It'll be for the Civil War. So it's going to be a fundraiser for the club. Um, if you uh put your name in one of the boxes, it's five dollars to put your name in one of the boxes. We're gonna try to get as many of them as we build as we can. Half of, yeah, the winner, so the only thing that matters in this, it's not by quarter, and that's just final score of the game. So final digit of the final score of the game. So twenty one points means one. The final digit of the final score. Uh, so if you get the ducks are on one side and the beavers are on the other, and you have well, a final score of sixteen to fifteen, it would be sixty five, and then you'd win the prize. So there will only be one winner. A half of the, half of what's in the kitty will go to the winner as well as a matching amount of Paul Harris points in addition. So uh, the other half will go to the club's uh general fund. Uh, so write your name clearly, otherwise all the money goes to the general fund. If I can't read it, then you can't claim it later. Um, so uh, so we'll have this up the next uh two meetings. Uh, so uh, bring your money, fill it in. Uh, the sooner you pick a box, you can probably know what numbers are, might be better in football games. Um, and you can pick the the numbers that you want until, but only one person per box. So we have our, I wanted to do a quick reminder, and I'll have Rick talk about it as well. But first, I want to do a reminder for the barbecue. You mentioned it a little bit, for trying to get Kevin to come back for the beer. But uh, September eleventh, so instead of having a meeting next week, we're having our barbecue at five thirty at the Aguina Yacht Club. Uh, please sign up. It's a quick, quick online. There's no cost. You sign up, you put down who your guests are, who's coming with you, and what what uh meal or what side dish you're bringing. The drinks, the uh burgers and hot dogs, all that's provided. So we just want to get a lot of people there and have a good time. Let's try to get signed up for that. And if you can, you know, let Tanya know if you can come early to help set up or help uh clean up. Uh, that would be great too. And it also helps her to know what you're bringing. So even if you don't know yet, please sign up anyways. You can modify it. That's what I did. And once I figured out what I was bringing. But uh, uh, get signed up. It'll be a lot of fun. So uh, in any other, again, any other way you can help out with Tanya, just let her know. She'd be more than happy to get some additional help. Uh, and Rick uh is still running the concert. Uh, and that's the day after our barbecue, so September twelfth, but Tsunami Zone. If you wanna if you're not, uh, if you wanna see uh uh what they are, their classic rock cover band, um, I I got to see them down um by uh um Don Davis uh uh a week or two ago. Uh, and they were great. Uh, for outdoors, I was really impressed. I was kind of worried uh that if they weren't gonna sound great outdoors, uh, but they sounded great. I think they'll sound really good in the pack. So uh, they've got some clips, if you go to their website, if you want to hear them, uh, but it'll be a lot of fun, I think. But what we want to do, uh, is also a silent auction, so uh baskets, I think you need baskets really quick, right, Rick?
Yes, Mr. President. So I would like to get those in hand in the next few days. That was my weekend's fun assignment, was getting the silent auction together. So the sooner the better. There's a few people in here that that have baskets or haven't promised. Anybody that wants to do a basket or a sponsorship or anything else, please get ahold of me right away down on the bottom of the flyers, my phone number. Of course, you can find it in the Rotary deal too. And um, are we doing Sergeant at Arms today, sir?
We will for a few minutes.
Oh, I want to get back in there for that real quick to thank some people. But yeah, I do need the silent auction items. And uh, anybody else that needs tickets, I gotta hear from you right away so I can get those for you.
Yeah, and and if you need extra tickets, like I got some extra tickets, just go to the pack site. Buy them through the pack too. Easy. Pick your seats. Uh, Rick got a block of the good seats for us, but uh, but there's, there's still lots of seats available. So uh, any other announcements quickly? Yeah, Marshall.
Yeah, so as you heard, there is no meeting on September eleventh for lunch, so you're all invited up to our central campus in Newport for our groundbreaking for our new uh building that you all uh so graciously approved the bond for. It's at eleven o'clock at our main campus, groundbreaking for the new uh Trade Center, and lunch will be provided there.
Thank you, Marshall. And that that new trade building, I know you won't be able to see it yet, but I've seen the plans for it. It's gonna be awesome. Rena?
I just wanted to invite everyone to meet the architects and give feedback for our new auditorium. So September twenty fourth at five P M. We'd love to have all kinds of people coming to uh brainstorm with us as we design a beautiful space that will hopefully be used by our whole community in the library at the high school.
Thanks. Do you know who the like, who the architect is, Ben Chins? If you don't, that's okay. Over her.
Yeah, I I didn't want to find it, but I said.
Yeah, so Capri has been working with us from the beginning. Um, they did some conceptual drawings and have been a great team. And then, you know, it'll be other people too, I think, but.
Awesome.
Say I can use my bridge of voice.
Uh, so as I've been talking about the last few weeks, the Salvation Army has our new community children's theater program starting up soon. And our mandatory child safety leader meeting is tomorrow at noon. There will be lunch. Um, so we have a few hours. If you want to help out at all with that program in any way, come join us at our Salvation Army office in the chapel. We're gonna have our big training doing that. Um, right now I only have, I think, about five people that are coming, and I'm hoping to have like thirty kids in the program. So the more adults we have involved, the easier it's gonna be. Come help us support education in the arts as we grow the children to be a bigger part of this community.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I will close off the announcements, as it looks like it's dying down anyways, and go to quickly to happy bucks, since it sounds like we might have some, right?
Mr. President, I'll take ten bucks a head for our generous sponsors here. The Sackton's The Sacktons with Advantage Real Estate, John Clark, those two at the top of the list, followed by Copeland and RD Construction. Followed by Mark Miranda, Richard Hoffman, Trevor Bear with State Farm, Richard O'Hern with Edward Jones, Rob and Amy Thompson. We know who they work for. Dave Edoff in Real Estate One, Doretta Smith, Megan Shane and John and Darla Zagel. So thank you all very much. I'll pay ten bucks, uh, off to the club.
I think that's a thirteen.
Yep, it, yes, it is. Thank you.
Dustin, did you want to? Well, we're happy to. That's great. That's, uh, and, uh, so Mark, I'm gonna be a hundred dollars happy to, to our local, um, foundation, uh, Gretchen Eyes. Technically twenty-fifth anniversary was, uh, on the second. Um, so I'm happy about that. We've been together for thirty years, but, uh, And I did have on the, on, on your newsletter, uh, there's all the birthdays, anniversaries. I didn't put partner birthdays, but I know what they are. If you put them in accurately into that TV, so, uh, if anybody else has any other happy bucks or anything they wanna do.
Oh, I'll give, I'll give five more because, uh, Bella is actually going to Brazil. So it's happening international and everyone gets a prize, so, yeah.
The others? Okay, um, so I got a couple of final things. Let's see. Let's see. I don't, oh, we're, we're not doing makeups in attendance. It's, it's truly is still out. Um, and I think membership incentive. Okay. Uh, we do have two fifty-fifty drawings, all right?
We're gonna do two today.
Did not have time last week, I think. Oh.
You know, the, uh, number trip incentive.
He's not here today. This is the first one he's missed in a while. Okay, so I think we have two fifty-fifties.
Yeah, first we have, uh, the social media winner is Michelle. Actually, the dog is the winner. So if you could, five bucks for the treats. Yeah, treats, please. All right, seventy-six dollars for the, we have two of these. So for the first seventy-six dollars, anybody but Tanya.
But two of them.
He's my neighbor. It's, it's a tough.
You don't wanna use it up on like the Power Balls, like two billion.
Doretta is the first winner. And the second winner.
Oh, any last minute announcements? No, we kinda did it at the end, so we don't really need to do that probably anymore, but, uh, our, uh, so as I stated, we don't have a regular meeting next week. So, uh, go to the college, uh, get some, get, get your food there and, uh, see the, the groundbreaking. That'll be very exciting. Um, and like I said, it is a spectacular, it's gonna be a spectacular facility. Uh, our whole community's gonna really benefit from it. Um, so, uh, but we do, so our next one, if you have a barbecue that night, please get signed up. Uh, and our next lunch meeting here is September eighteenth. Uh, where our presentation will be about Child of Oregon, that's presented by the director, Mindy Deliri. So with that, I have Carlos here. Oh, I'd asked Carl to take us out with the four-way test.
And four-way test, like the, you think the same review is the first. Second. Third.
Thank you, everybody.